Commissar Henshams. Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanna.
Not here at the moment.
Not here.
Okay, the next thing is introductions. I want to introduce some of our staff. Up front here is Brad Davis, our planning manager, Barb Simonson, our deputy clerk. In the audience, I see Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner. Is Nathan here? Okay. And also I see on our county commissioners, Tom Wolf's here. There he is. Okay, first thing on the, the next thing on the agenda is approval of the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two board meetings, minutes. Any questions or additions or corrections on the minutes?
I will approve the minutes.
Second.
Most of them second approved, uh, the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in favor? Minutes have been approved. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing request for approval of variance from the required hundred-foot setback from a DNR-protected water course to seventy-four point nine feet to replace a single-family home in section sixteen of Spring Lake Township. And Greg, you're going to handle this. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So on the screen is the subject, or is the site location map, the subject property. It's located at one eight seven three six Fairlawn Avenue. As you said, it's section sixteen, Spring Lake Township. Fairlawn Avenue is County Road eighty-one. City of Praut Lake is just to the north. There we go. Outline here is the subject property. You can see it's heavily wooded site. Has an existing home that's located in the trees here. I'll jump to a site survey here in a minute. But the request, as you indicated, is a variance from the one-hundred-foot setback from a DNR-protected stream to seventy-four point nine feet to replace a single-family home. So this is a survey of the subject property. And as I zoom in, sorry, we have new technology in back here, so it just might take a second. Alright. So you can see on the, on the site, the proposed home and the requested number here is seventy-four point nine feet to the DNR stream. So the, the stream enters the property on the west and then flows through to the east side of the site onto the adjacent neighbor's property. The six-point-four acre site is largely wooded and has a single-family home with an attached garage. The home and the garage were originally built back in nineteen seventy-three. The home, the existing home, you can see there's this indication here, existing house footprint. And there's a corner of the existing home underneath. And this measurement here, seventy-four point eight, goes to the bank of the DNR stream. So the existing home built in nineteen seventy-three is at that seventy-four point eight mark, or foot mark. The proposed home now overlaid on top, at its closest, would be seventy-four point nine feet. So the, the home was built in seventy-five, and at the time, there was a DNR standard for a one-hundred-foot setback. It's unclear if it was not enforced. Aerial photography and, and that type of information that we have now was not available back then. So the, the home was built at that seventy-four point eight. The applicant is looking to replace that home, which is a fourteen-hundred-square-foot structure, and then it has an attached garage on it. The new home would be just over five thousand square feet, so somewhat more significantly bigger. Our ordinance does allow expansion of a non-conforming structure by fifty percent, but this is more than fifty percent, so hence the need for the variance. There is also a provision, when we looked at this, from a staff level, you know, what is the impact to the topography on the site? What is the impact to the wooded area? What would the setback be? So there, there's a provision in ordinance with DNR shoreline that you can do averaging, which means that if there's a, a structure in an adjacent lot, you can do setback averaging. So we looked at the structure to the east, which is this home, so this is immediately to the east. And it's hard to see the numbers here, but you can see the, you can see the stream. This house was built in nineteen seventy-five, so it was just two years later. And at the closest point, the adjacent home is at sixty-six feet, approximately sixty-six feet. So what the DNR shoreline regulations allow us to do is take that average, so sixty-six and the required hundred-foot setback, and average that distance, which would be eighty-three feet. I think that was pointed out in the staff report that Nathan, Nathan prepared for the, the board. So normally here, the applicant could have located the home at eighty-three feet without variance. But the applicant is looking to save some mature trees. I think he provided a letter explaining that, shifting the house that four, excuse me, nine feet forward would take out some more mature trees on the site. So he's asking for variance, essentially to put the home in the same location, not decrease the setback from what it is now. So staff feels that is reasonable. We are supportive because he's not going any closer. And, and also, we, we did send this to the Minnesota DNR. It was noted into your packet. The DNR noted that it would be beneficial to see some native vegetation or buffer along the stream to control some, the additional stormwater runoff from the house. So we've added that as a condition of approval. There were two recommended conditions of approval. One was that they implement those buffers along the stream. And the second was just a timing issue. This board meets tonight. Spring Lake Town Board meets on Thursday night. So the second condition is that this recommendation, or if, if the variance is approved, no building permit would be issued until the township makes their recommendation. Staff has recommended approval of the request. The applicant is here. If you have any questions for him, otherwise I would happily try and answer any questions that this board has.
Greg, as far as the creek is concerned, do you know if that's an inlet or outlet to Buck Lake?
I believe it is, uh, an outlet to Buck Lake, yes.
Close to Buck Lake, okay. Any questions from this board?
I'm curious, how much water is in that creek? Is it like two inches or is it a, you know, is it a larger creek? Or it's hard to see it on, on the site?
Yeah, you can come up here. It's very, it's very shallow. We, we had some staff do some site visits. It's very, it, it's not a huge navigable creek with a boat or canoe or anything, right?
No, no. Yeah, my name is Vitaly Tereshkov. I am the owner of the property. So there's barely any water. So in some cases, there's not even a foot of water. So, and the reason of the variance, we just want to save those trees. We even designed our house to go around those trees. There's a, a alley of, uh, nice, beautiful maple trees. We just want to keep them and, and, and build the house as, as it was shown, so.
I assume there's some water in the creek in the spring thaw, probably is the most time. There's some water in there, so.
Say again, sir?
Spring thaw. I assume the water in the creek will be the most in the spring thaw, this time of year.
Yeah, because there, there was none in the summer times.
Any other questions?
I have a question for, um, Mr. Wagner. The DNR recommended that if we approve this, that there'd be a vegetation strip, minimum of twenty-five feet from the crest of the bluff down to control runoff. What would that involve? And I know that that would be a recommendation, part of the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Bonhoff, I think I'll let the applicant address the DNR component because he, he has spoken with the DNR and submitted a permit?
Correct.
Okay.
So basically, it's gonna be, you know, a grass seed, you know, and then whatever is gonna be growing there, so.
Is that what the DNR recommended, that type of seed?
That's what they asked me to do, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from this board? So public hearing, anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? Please come up to the podium, state your name. Going coming, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, motion, second, close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor? Public hearing is closed, and your wishes on this variance?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that, based on the criteria for granting a variance, I recommend approval of the requested variance from the required one-hundred-foot setback from a DNR-protected stream to seventy-four point nine feet to replace a single-family home, subject to the, the conditions listed in the staff report.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, we do have two conditions to put on here. The vegetation for the requirement and...
It's in the packet. Correct, Greg? It's in the packet. It's part of the conditions.
I think, I think, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, I think he did mention that his motion is subject to those conditions.
Okay.
Yes, I did hear that. Okay. And the other one is the township approval, right?
Yep.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, approve the variance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor? The variance been approved. And anything else, Brad, for the board of adjustment?
No.
Do you have a motion to close the board of adjustment?
So moved.
A motion?
I'll second.
A motion, second, close the board of adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor? Board adjustment is closed. Turn over to Planning Commission.
Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for April eleventh. We're back at County Government Center.
Yeah, they're turning it back on.
Oh?
It's on, it's on.
They're on.
And I'll go to our deputy clerk of the board to roll call this evening.
Commissioner Pika. Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Henshams.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanna.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Thank you. And just for introduction, that was our Barb Simonson, our deputy clerk to the board. Next to her is Brad Davis, our planning manager. In the audience, I see Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, and Greg Wagner, our principal planner, was just up at the podium. And I believe Nathan Hall may be here this evening. He is not in the audience this evening. But I do know that Tom Wolf, our county commissioner, is back in the corner there. I did see him this evening. So welcome to everyone. The first item of business we have is the approval of the previous Planning Commission meeting minutes from March fourteenth. I know all the commissioners have been sent a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions or deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. Any further discussion? I will call for a voice, voice vote on that. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The next item, we have three items this evening on our consent, on our consent agenda. Unless someone would like an item moved, removed from the consent agenda, they will all be approved through one motion. The first item is the Milner Platte, which is number twenty-twenty-one dash zero six four. The second item is a Reese Graff Platte, number twenty-twenty-two dash zero one four. And the third item is the Hernandez IUP. Would anyone like to have any of those items removed from the consent agenda? If not, I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and all the items will be approved on that, on those, on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I will approve the consent agenda as presented.
Aye.
Oh, second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Huber. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. The next item we have is our public hearing, and it's the Schiefer Platte. And Greg Wagner will be making the staff report on that. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So on the screen is the site location map of the subject property in section twenty-one of Spring Lake Township. For locational purposes, State Highway thirteen is over to the west. This is south of Praut Lake and just northwest of Fish Lake. The property is along borders Burgess Avenue, which is a township road to the east, and then one hundred ninety-fifth street on the north. The applicant, Mike Bassett, is requesting to rezone and subdivide the one hundred sixteen point two-seven acres, previously owned by Doug Schiefer. Now, ownership is transferred to Amazed Acres in section twenty-one of Spring Lake Township. Properties in Spring Lake Township in the rural residential area are eligible to rezone from the Rural Residential One Reserve District to the Rural Residential Single Family District, RR two, which allows a development density of one dwelling per two and a half acres. Shifting over to the aerial photo. As you can see, the property is mostly open agricultural cropland. In the center of the property, or towards the, the eastern side of this north forty acres, there is a depression area, which is wooded and has some wetland area. And then further on the west, there is a DNR stream that crosses through the property in the northwest corner, goes across Burgess, and then circles back and crosses back onto the property in, in the southwest corner of, of the parcel. But again, most of the property is open agricultural land, except for, for the areas I just described. To the north, there is an existing residence that is not included in this platte. Previously, there was a parcel. That property was rezoned a number of years ago. The home was split up, and then this area here was, was planted as an outlet, and that area is included in this proposal. The applicants met with county staff and representatives from Spring Lake Township last year, spring of twenty twenty-one, to discuss their proposal to develop this property. It was noted at that time that, because this property is one hundred sixteen acres, under Minnesota law, an environmental assessment worksheet is required to look at impacts from proposed developments for any development proposing to change over eighty acres. So this development proposes to take over eighty acres out of agricultural production and put it into residential. So last summer, the applicants did go through the environmental assessment worksheet process. That is a process, again, established by state under the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board. And that just looks at environmental impacts, transportation issues, groundwater, stormwater, et cetera. So that, the applicants went through that process, and, and then it was forwarded to the county board in August. And the board, after review and public comment period, found that there was no need to proceed to an environmental impact statement, which is a larger environmental review of the property. So the board approved a declaration of, did not meet the requirements for EIS. So the EAW was approved, and the applicants were allowed to move on to their proposal. I'm going to reference when I flip to the next screen. So you can see to the, to the east, there's a development, Dune Berry Knolls. That development was done about twenty years ago. So a lot of existing homes, and there, there is a road right of way that is stubbed to the property line. So you can see that there is this type of development in this area of Spring Lake Township. Okay, site survey that was in your packet. You can see the topography, high spot here, higher on the west side. And then again, that wooded area with some small wetland in between. Alright, so this is the layout of the proposed project. The project would bring, would bring a new road off of one ninety-fifth street that would cut through the property and eventually connect back out to Burgess Avenue. One ninety-fifth street is paved to the east property line. It's paved out to County Road eighty-one. The township is requiring one ninety-fifth street to be paved past the entrance to this development. Similarly, Burgess Avenue is paved going north to Highway thirteen, and then it's gravel. But there is a small section here, again, at the entrance to the development, that will be paved or, or upgraded to township standards. So all roads within the project, including this main east-west road, they have another road connection going to the south. And then they have a couple stub roads going to the west and south here. And then I, I referenced that right-of-way that was planted from Dune Berry Knolls. So that currently ends in a temporary cul-de-sac, but the right-of-way was planted to the lot line. That road segment here will not be built as part of this proposal. So it was originally discussed, under county ordinance, we have a lot of language in our subdivision regulations promoting and requiring road connectivity, mainly for, well, road connectivity for service vehicles. So the mailman, garbage trucks, school buses, delivery vehicles. Also for, you know, promoting connectivity for local road maintenance, township snowplows, et cetera. When this application went to the township back in March, the applicants, and I think some adjacent residents, discussed that road connection. And it was deemed that, at this point, nobody wants that road connection to be put in. The county is certainly aware that the township is supporting that, building that road at this time. But county ordinance still requires the right-of-way to be dedicated. So we cannot waive that requirement. So at this point, county staff, based on the ordinance, is recommending that dedication be made. So if in the future, the township or some other party want to make that connection, the right-of-way is dedicated and is there. As far as the lots go, you can see each lot has a building pad and then two septic sites. The applicants did work with our environmental resources staff last fall. They did a significant amount of septic review work. There was a review memo included in your packet that requires some adjustments to some of the septic sites. The applicants are working with our environmental services staff now. The weather has, this spring has not cooperated with the rain, but we have conditions, we have a condition in the staff report that we're recommending to the Planning Commission that this item does not get forwarded to the county board until those septic issues are resolved. Similarly, there was a stormwater review memo in your packet from Megan Task, our water resources engineer. The applicants and their engineer are designing this with a stormwater system that has a series of stormwater ponds to accommodate the new impervious surface created from the roads and the future houses and driveways. They have to capture that water and control the stormwater rate and volume as you, most of you are very familiar with, with any other development. That system is designed to county standards, and it's also designed to the standards of the Spring Lake Township, who ultimately accept responsibility for maintaining that system. So the township engineer has also reviewed those plans. The applicant last week resubmitted new plans, which is what you see here on the screen. Our staff is currently reviewing those. And again, we have a condition that, that the stormwater issues are resolved before this talks to county board. There are no impacts to the DNR stream that I mentioned. Again, that's in the far northwest corner, and then it cuts through the property here. All homes and septic sites meet the required structure and septic setback from the DNR-protected stream. The only impact that really is occurring here is this area right here in that, in that kind of wooded depression that I pointed out earlier. There is a wetland through here, so there will be an impact to the wetland. But the applicants are working with the Scottsdale Water Conservation District to mitigate that wetland impact for the road. And mitigation is either replacement of, of the wetland or purchasing of wetland bank credits. So they're, they're working through those issues. And lastly, Spring Lake Town Board, so this was in your packet. As I mentioned, they recommended approval of this request at their March meeting. And subject to plans being revised to meet township standards and the development agreement that will be drafted by the township attorney. The applicant and his engineer are here. If you would have any technical questions for them, otherwise I would stand for any questions. And Ted Kowalski from the township is here as well.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henshams.
Doug, it's two point five is the acreage on the proposed development, two point five each?
Correct.
The development that's already there to the east, was that more than, was that more than two point five?
As far as the density, no, that, that is the same.
It's the same? Okay, it didn't look the same when I was looking at this and then looking over here.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Greg, as far as what you said about the roads, one hundred ninety-fifth is only going to be extended about two hundred feet to the entrance. You're not going all the way to Burgess?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And then as far as Burgess, you're going to extend from the pavement on the north property line south to the entrance?
Correct. Typically, yes, they would be required, well, they're required by county ordinance to pave the roads within the subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
The external roads are at the discretion of the road authority, which is the township. So when they review that with the township, that's what Spring Lake requested they do.
And this might be more of a township question. I'm a big believer in connectivity of the neighborhoods, and that one street is not going to be connected to the neighborhood to the east. I live in a neighborhood where I have to drive to the southern neighborhood, south of me. I have to drive five miles to get to it. It just seems crazy that we didn't interconnect those neighborhoods. So I, 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 I guess I, I think it's not really good to not connect those neighborhoods, and maybe the township could explain why they think it's not good.
Yep. And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber will let Ted answer that question. But like, like I said before, to be clear, the county, county cannot require the road to be built, but our ordinance does require the right-of-way to be dedicated.
Good evening.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Ted Kowalski, Spring Lake Township. Commissioner Huber, the reason we don't want the road is we have to maintain the roads. We figure a road about one hundred ninety feet to two hundred feet long like that, based on what we rebuilt Mush Town Road last year, that's about a twenty thousand dollar to redo that road. Well, put it to today's dollars, it's maybe thirty thousand dollars. Go twenty years in the future, when it does need to be redone, it's probably forty thousand. That doesn't sound astronomical, but do that in ten neighborhoods, and that's half our, our budget for the year.
I understand the reasoning that to extend one hundred ninety-fifth to Burgess. I understand that.
No, even Aaron. I'm just talking about Aaron. Aaron runs into that kind of money. So we're trying to be careful when we, you know, putting in new lots and more neighborhoods is great. But we really want them to be cost-effective. We can't, we couldn't go in there and build a neighborhood of six hundred-foot-wide frontage lots and expect, you know, that many people to pay for a road where it needs to be redone. And I hear your point about having to drive a long way, but here, all they do is drive back out to one hundred ninety-fifth and over, and you're getting to Dunes Berry again.
Mine's a little extreme that way, but yeah.
And, and this one, this road connects right at the top of a wetland. So they gotta be really careful not to impact that wetland with this road. We just don't see it serves a great purpose. And the people on Aaron Avenue don't want it, and so it's like, we don't need it. That's our, that's our point.
That was the same thing. The people on, on the road I live on didn't want it either. So I, I don't know if I completely agree with that, but I understand.
I have a question for you, I have a question. I noticed on the roadway plaque here, that there's not circles at the end of the, like where the roads come to a dead end, or some type of turnaround at the end there. Put in the roadway plan. I just don't know if that's not indicated on the plaque.
Yeah, see what you're saying. We didn't put bubbles on the cul-de-sac.
You see what I'm saying about that? That becomes a, an issue with turning equipment around in there.
Yeah, I think we could address that with our township engineer. I'm surprised that's missed. It should be, there'd be a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead or something.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking when I saw that. So you've got three of them in there, so.
Yep. Not a problem. One, two, yeah, three.
Any other questions? Any questions for Mr. Wagner at this point from the commission? Okay, very good. This is a, this is a public hearing, so anyone who would like to make comment on this application can come up to the podium. can come up to the podium, and there is a sign-up sheet there to sign in and just start with your name and, and just know about your feelings about this application. Not seeing a lot of people getting up. Oh, okay.
Heard someone.
I'll be patient. Good evening.
Jeff Miller, resident on Aaron Avenue. I understand your point about that cul-de-sac dead end in there, but speaking on behalf of residents, we really don't want that road to go through. We see no reason for it to go through, and so I appreciate that. That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
My biggest concern is the drainage issues, the wetlands and where they're putting the ponds and that, so I don't know if I got to bring that up with Greg, but I want it on record that I kind of messed up. I should have brought the previous owner, the conciliation court over it, because the drain tiles are all ruined and right behind my lot is, let's say, it rains two inches. We called it Lake Ivan for years. So that's my concern is the drainage issues here.
Applicant like to address that or come up and address that? I know that the water runoff is a significant portion of the engineering that goes into this.
I'm Michael Bassett. I will have my engineer elaborate on the drainage and the ponds that have been created and whatnot, to solve the water runoff problems.
I was looking at your grading plan, and I never seen nothing over here in the corner lot.
We can't see what you're pointing to up there, so if you point at, if you point on that one that's in front of you there, then we can see it too, so.
Right, right here, yeah.
Okay.
In that corner, yeah.
Okay.
Now we see that.
Are you putting a berm in or, or nothing on your grading plans?
So I'm, I'm.
It's that little section there with that.
Okay, he'll address it.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I'm Ryan Bloom with Westwood, engineer for the project. And yes, so with the infrastructure, we're putting in a number of stormwater ponds and conservation easements over the existing wetlands. That is where the water does go. And so I think, you know, along with treating the water, we are slowing the rate, right, and trying to slow it down, but also infiltrate, you know, to meet the county and the state standards on that. So I think we'll have to work with the homeowner to maybe make sure that we have a solution that is reasonable. Everything does work its way to the north from the site. There's these two wetland complexes, this one right here, which works its way into the, to the north and underneath, and similarly, all of this water works its way to the north, really through your property.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Where the drain tiles do destroy.
Okay. And so, you know, we stick to the existing drainage patterns, along with treating the water and slowing it down. So I think the, the only real answer I can say is that we'll work together to find a reasonable way to get the water to the other side of your property. So I don't know, is it, is it really, I don't have contours, does it really just kind of swell through your property?
I've got contours right here on the.
I think it's two tents.
After our meeting, we can take it as two tents.
But like, yeah, my water can't get out of there till your water's gone, and you can see how much of a drainage issue we have here.
Yeah, yeah. So I think something we'll have to just work together on.
Okay, thank you.
Meanwhile, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Greg had mentioned, we had resubmitted to the county, we've submitted all our stormwater management calcs, and I think we're really close from a county and township review standard. This is the first I'm hearing really of this item, so I think we'll just have to work together a little bit to make sure that it's resolved.
Well, I just wanted on record that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Dan Fisher, and I'm also live in Doonberry Knolls, and I sort of have a similar question as far as the drainage, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So, and you can't see it, so I live here.
Do it on the screen.
You live? Right here.
Yep.
So, yep, so this is, this is my property. So there's always been some semblance of a pond or drainage, it's a low area here essentially, and there's been drain tile at times that has worked and that hasn't worked. Whoever farmed it or whatever, every other year, they'd come in and rip it up, and it'd go here, there, and everywhere. So I'm just curious and just want, I guess, on record that I have concern that how, you know, this is going to be, you know, re-engineered with drain tiles so that either the corner of my property here isn't going to flood, or, you know, it's part of my property isn't going to get ripped up to put drain tile in.
Sure.
Okay, thank you for your question.
Yeah, and just to respond to that item, so there is an existing wetland that sits here, we're building a stormwater pond directly next to it that'll receive the runoff from this wetland, and we're installing a new culvert under the road here that will allow this water to leave. That, that is the natural way for it to go, once it would fill up.
Right.
Well, actually, no, this, 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 some of it goes onto the property here, but.
If you page it down, I think the next pages would be the.
Grading plan?
Yep.
So here's the existing wetland.
Yes.
Right there. And then this is the stormwater pond right next to it.
Okay.
And then this will have an emergency overflow for the wetland to go into the basin, and which will have a culvert that will bring it to the north.
Oh, so it'll go north, it won't go south?
Yep. It didn't go south unless it got extremely high.
Right.
Then it would have went south.
Yeah, and then it would run through the corner of our property, then under the street, and then into the holding ponds of Doonberry Knolls.
Yep.
So it'll no longer do that.
No.
Correct. Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you for your comment.
Right here? Yeah. There is a swale right here.
Right, that goes around this property.
Did you want to talk further about the drainage here?
Sorry, we're having our own meeting.
I understand.
This goes back to.
This is, this is a public hearing, so we're.
This goes back to Dewey's question, that our drainage actually goes around his entire property here on the east side of the north, so if he wanted to have any further questions, it's kind of, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification on that, then.
Sorry for our personal meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bennett?
Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. Bennett?
We do have a question.
Just a couple little things. How did you come upon the names for a couple of the streets? I can't pronounce the.
T. Jewel's Way is my daughter's.
Okay.
Peyton and Peyton Lane is one of my partner's daughters, and the name of his other daughter was taken, so we went with her middle name.
Genady, is that it?
Genady, yes.
Okay. My second, it's just a comment, but actually, I was on this board when Doonberry Knolls went into being, and so we had comments like drainage and all that way back when that was developed, and that was a pretty big development at the time, so that's how old I am. All that knowledge.
Any other questions or comments on the application? Okay. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Robbins, second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will entertain an action by the board at this time with further discussion.
Mr. Chair, based on criteria for approval listed in staff report, I recommend approval of the rezoning of 116.27 acres from RR1 Rural Residential Reserve District to RR2 Rural Residential Single Family District. In the preliminary plat amazed acres consisting of 37 lots on 116.27 acres, noting that this recommendation is subject to conditions listed that must be satisfactory addressed prior to county board consideration and knowing the town board has recommended approval.
Second? Second? I think you're.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion before call for vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion? Vote aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you very much for your input this evening and the applicant opinion this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Our next item is a conditional use permit amendment and preliminary plat and final plat through decept third edition. And I see that Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff report on this this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on the screen is the site location map for the Decept property. The property currently consists of 11 and a half acres. What they are doing is adding an additional 5.4 acres on the north and west side of the property here. The parcel is zoned industrial, and the applicant got his original conditional use permit in 1997 and has had three amendments since that original conditional use permit was issued. The property lies just to the east of Johnson Memorial Drive or State Highway 169, about a half mile north of County Road 14 or 150th Street here. And it's just to the west of the Minnesota River Bluff, which is in this area here. So it's sandwiched between the Bluff and 169 and Louisville Road, Frontage Road. Jump to a aerial photo of the property now. Here you can see the bulk of the property that's been developed here to the south, the existing boundaries of the applicant's parcel here. Currently, there are three industrial buildings on the south side of the parcel. One of the buildings in this area here is a building that the applicant operates his truck and auto repair business from. And then there are two other buildings located in this area here that he leases to other industrial-type uses. But it is through his truck and auto repair business that he's received a number of requests by customers that he does repair on their trucks to find a location to park trucks. It's getting more and more difficult to find areas where people can store large vehicles in the cities of, or Lake Shockley and Savage, it's very difficult to store those kind of vehicles. So in response to that demand, he's looking at amending this conditional use permit one more time to include storage of these outside tractor trailers and other commercial vehicles, and also with the ability to add some additional cold storage buildings here, he's looking at possibly an additional 6,000 to 10,000 square feet of cold storage building. So to the north of his existing buildings right now, you see some RVs parked in there. He amended his conditional use permit in 2019 for RV, boat, and car storage. So that's in this area here and also up into here. What he's proposing to do now is develop this portion of the property for, for the truck storage, and I think if I go to the next one. So here is the layout of the property, again, the three buildings to the south, which is where the industrial uses take place, the repair, the RV and boat and car storage here in the center portion of the property. There is one cold storage building under construction in this area here, proposing to move into this area, approximately two acres for the truck and commercial storage. The applicant doesn't allow vehicles to be stored that aren't licensed, that aren't in good repair, that aren't, aren't serviceable. So he has fairly strict requirements for people that lease space to him, that these vehicles have to be, have to be in working form to be stored here. Let's see if I have. Here's the grading plan for the new area. Because we're adding acres of impervious surface, we do need to account for that runoff, the runoff from the site, for the most part, is from the east here along the Bluff to the west, so drainage would be directed here to the center area where it would funnel into a series of stormwater infiltration basins to both treat the water and to actually reduce the volume of the water through the infiltration area. So that will control the rate and the volume runoff leaving the site. This is a ghost plat that shows the applicant's family's property. His use is down here in the southern end of the parcel. However, the applicant's family owns land further to the north, so they are looking at this with an eye towards the future, that at some point in the future, when, you know, possibly when public services come out here to water, there's higher and better uses for the land, where some of these storage uses could go away, and you could create lots to accommodate buildings. This is a grading plan for the, for the site. To the north is here to the left. Currently, the applicant has an eight-foot screening berm with a six-foot tall fence adjacent to the RV and car storage area. His intent is to continue that to the north in this area here, in areas where he doesn't immediately put up a cold storage building that would act as that screen. So if he doesn't put up a building, he's going to be continuing that, that screening berm and fence in this area here. In addition to that, he's looking at constructing a six-to-12-foot berm in this area and putting a couple rows of cedar trees on top of that, and then a couple of, I think he has about 10 maple trees that are located in this area here. We feel that the screening he's proposing and what's out there does a pretty good job of screening his outside storage currently, and the proposed extension that he's looking at doing will do a good job of screening that as well. Going back to the site plan, currently, the site only has access here on the south to Louisville Road, which was constructed as part of the 41, 169, County Road 78 interchange project. He is looking to add an additional access here to the north. That access was reviewed by the township at their meeting last Thursday night. They are comfortable with an additional access to Louisville Road for this piece just because of the size of it and the amount of frontage along the road. Our natural resources engineer has reviewed the stormwater management plan for this site. You did get a review memo in your packet with a few items that still needed to be followed up on. The applicant's engineer did respond to those comments, and we are waiting for our engineer to complete her review, but there doesn't appear to be anything there that can't be addressed with the area that he has available down in this area here. I'm going to jump now to the plat document. So this is the, this is the final plat document for the parcel. One of the improvements that is taking place through the plating process is we are including some of this area, which was between the lot, the existing parcel and Louisville Road, and then another piece down here that was an exception to the previous plat. So these, this exception here will be included with the lot, and then this area here between the existing Louisville Road will also be included. So we'll square off, we'll make the parcel more of a rectangular shape, which is more beneficial, I think, from, from, you know, just use of the, use of the other pieces around it. No, no septic information was required as part of this request because of the use won't increase the septic use on the parcel. The township did hear this request at their meeting last Thursday night. They did recommend approval contingent upon their township planner reviewing the request. And any, any comment that their township planner would have they'd want addressed before board action, and the applicant is comfortable with that. The township planner was out of town last weekend, wasn't able to look at it, so we anticipate that review to come here fairly quickly. Our staff is recommending approval of both the amended conditional use permit and the preliminary final plot of decept addition, subject to the criteria in the planning report. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the commission, from Mr. Schmidt? Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, just that this paperwork is really, there's no way we could read that. Is it the engineer did that, or?
Yes, that's part of the, part of the grading plan, Commissioner Johnson. Usually those, those plans come on a larger sheet, so unless you would blow it up on your computer when you, when you get it sent to you, it is fairly difficult to read that, that when it's on an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet of paper.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Huber.
Marty, as far, go to that grading plan again. You mentioned, I can see where the cedar tree. You mentioned, I can see where the cedar trees are going, and you say you feel that there's good screening there in what they're proposing. Did you mention there's another berm somewhere? I don't see it on this plan.
I'm going to go to this plan here. So there's an existing berm in this area here, Commissioner Huber.
So they'll just extend that?
They'll extend that in the areas where they don't put cold storage buildings on the west side of the storage lot. So if they put up a cold storage building, that will suffice for the screening for the storage.
So they'll extend one, and then they'll build a new one on the northwest?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the material that's going to be there that's impervious? Is it class five?
I believe it's class five. The applicant is here, he could answer that question as well.
We blacked out buildings as well.
Okay.
Will be inserted. Or concrete.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments on this application, they can come up to the podium, and there is a sign-on sheet at the podium. Please start with your name. Okay, I'm going to wait just a little bit longer, because the last time I said it doesn't look like anyone's going to get up. About three people got up at the same time. So in case there's anyone out there who really wants to say something and is just a little shy, I'll give them another minute. Okay, now I'm going to say it. It looks like no one wants to make further comments. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time. Motion by Commissioner Robbins. I have a motion of Commissioner Robbins. Will you second, Commissioner Watson?
Yes, I'll con- second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. All in favor of what? Aye. Okay, the public hearing is closed. I will now entertain action or motion on this or a discussion.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval and the amended conditions listed in the staff report, recommend approval of a conditional use permit amendment and preliminary and final plat of decept three, third edition noting that the Louisville Town Board has recommended approval of this request, pending small review of ordinance.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Henches. Is there any further discussion at this time? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor of what? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Your application has been approved. Thank you very much. Okay, our next item is an interim use permit for Impact Power Solutions LLC. In interim use permit for Impact Power Solutions LLC, construct and operate a 1 megawatt community solar energy system. And Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff presentation.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on the screen again is the site location map for the proposed solar garden. It is a 1-megawatt solar garden. It's proposed to be located in Section 18 of Belle Plaine Township on a 90-acre parcel. To give you some idea where we're at here, this is Meridian Avenue, County Road 3 on the west side of the property, city of Belle Plaine located about a half mile to the north of the property, and Laredo Avenue, which is a township road located on the west side of the parcel. As I said, the parcel is 90 acres in total. The solar garden is a 1-megawatt solar garden. Solar panels will cover approximately eight acres of the piece, and that's proposed to be located here in this northwest corner of the property. The property is zoned urban expansion. Is there a cluster in solar gardens are allowed in this zoning district, subject to a few standards? One, they have to be two miles from any existing solar garden. We have one other solar garden in Belle Plaine Township, or not in Belle Plaine Township, in Polkley Township, that is more than two miles away. And there's another solar garden actually in the northern part of the city of Belle Plaine. This solar garden is over two miles from that facility as well. Maximum size of a solar garden in this area is 1-megawatt, as I said earlier. So let's jump to the aerial photo. Here's an aerial photo of the site. You can see the property, the 90-acre piece is, for the most part, agricultural land from end to end. There is a four-acre building site located in the center of the property. I believe this was the original homestead for this parcel. It was rezoned to urban expansion cluster in order to separate this parcel off a number of years ago. There are some 10-acre properties located here to the west of the proposed solar garden. Then there are a few residential pieces over here to the east along Laredo Avenue. This is the plan for the actual solar garden, located here. This is that 10-acre parcel just to the west of the solar garden. There is a home in this wooded area, approximately right here. The solar garden would consist of panels that are approximately eight feet high. They're mounted on steel or galvanized steel racking. The panels would tip with the passage of the sun from east to west across the sky to maximize the capture of the solar energy from the site. Like I said, the panels aren't proposed to be over eight feet and are proposed to average about eight feet in height. However, they could be a little higher. County ordinance limits them to less than 15 feet. The solar garden itself is proposed to be screened with evergreen trees on the west side and the south side. This is to aid in screening the solar facility from the home here. Even though that parcel is wooded, there is concern, the home sits significantly higher than the solar garden during winter, fall periods, the solar garden might be more visible. So the applicant is showing six-foot evergreens along that west side of the facility. Also, along the southern side of the facility, they're showing evergreen trees. That's to screen it from this building site here just to the south. Access to the solar garden will be to Meridian Avenue. There's an existing access point here that serves both this 10-acre parcel and the four-acre piece to the south. They will use that existing access. However, they will be building their own driveway from the right-of-way back to the solar facility. This access will be used pretty heavily during construction, bringing in equipment and materials to construct the facility. But once it's built, very little traffic will be coming and going from this site. The applicant estimates three to five trips per year for maintenance and to address mowing needs and any problems at the facility. There will be remote monitoring of this facility, so they will be aware if there are problems with the facility itself, and they can send out crews to investigate those issues. Along the south side of this access road, there'll be a new transmission line constructed to bring the power from the solar garden to Meridian Avenue, where there's an existing power line, that will also need to be upgraded to three-phase to handle the solar garden. So the applicant will be upgrading the line along Meridian Avenue and then constructing a new line from Meridian Avenue back to the solar garden. There will be three poles installed up near Meridian Avenue on the south side of the driveway. Those are necessary to house equipment and make that interconnection with the existing line. I did fail to mention, the landscape plan also includes pollinator-friendly seed mix within the solar panel area. These type of seed mixes generally are lower-growing plant material. They don't interfere with the capture of the sun's rays, but they are beneficial for all the pollinator plants and insects that we have. And it's pretty common within the other solar gardens that we have in the county to have that pollinator mix. There is a wetland that's located here in the very northwestern corner of the solar garden, in discussion with the Scott County Soil and Water Conservation Office. That's the local government unit responsible for Wetland Conservation Act here. It is allowable to install these solar panels within that wetland area because it is a low-quality farmed wetland. However, if the wetland does need to be further drained or fill, would need to be brought into the site, the applicant would need to have wetland credits in order to do that. The applicant does have access to those wetland credits if need be, so we're not concerned about the wetland at this point. This is a view of what the landscaping would look like. It'd be six-foot evergreens, so these are growing taller. I know in the planning report I have that the landscape would include dogwoods and evergreens. That was from a previous version of the plan that was submitted. The latest version only included those six-foot evergreens on the south and west side. This is a view of the fence that'll be surrounding the facility. It'll be an eight-foot tall fence. There'll be no barbed wire on top of it. It'll be a chain-link fence. This meets our requirement of having a six-foot fence around the entire facility. That concludes... Oh, we'll talk about this here quickly. So as part of the application for a solar garden, we do require that the applicant do a glare study, some to show what the potential impacts from glare off the solar panels are. The panels are usually treated with anti-glare film to reduce glare on them, but we do require them to use this tool to look at adjacent parcels and see if there would be impacts to adjacent properties. The applicant looked at six residential properties, four here to the west and south of the solar garden, and two here further east of the solar garden. Through this tool, they determine that these three parts here are these homesites here to the west and north, and then this parcel, this home site over here to the west, do have the potential for glare from the solar garden during certain times of the year. One of the issues with the tool, however, is it doesn't take into consideration existing vegetation or proposed landscaping that the applicant will be doing. And as you can see from, I'm going to try and go back to the aerial photo, as you can see from the aerial photo, these parcels here to the east, there's significant vegetation around those. The one to the south, not quite so much. The ones here to the east, there's some vegetation around those building sites as well. In addition, the applicant will be installing those six-foot evergreen trees. The way the conditional use permit is structured, staff has a draft condition in there, if, after the facility is constructed, these properties experience glare, the applicant will need to address that either through additional planting, landscaping within the property itself, or with working with these residents to add some additional screening on their own property. And that's consistent with how we've dealt with other solar facilities in the county. With that, one more item, I guess township recommendation. The township did hear this request and did recommend approval, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Are there any questions?
The applicant is present. He may want to add something more to my presentation here. I don't know if the township is present, though, but...
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Schmidt right now?
Mr. Chairman, I did notice that there was reference to dogwood trees before. And my other, just wondering, there's gravel roads on a couple different sides. Does that impact the dust that's going to be on these panels?
I'll let the applicant address that, Commissioner Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pat Weir with IPS Solar out of Roseville, Minnesota. I was actually with you five, six years ago for the three NextEra projects that were approved and built, and great to be back. So as far as dust, no. Because that road won't be traveled on very much, there shouldn't be much dust created. And the panels are going to be quite a ways away from that road anyways.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to, Brad did, Marty did a great job explaining the project. I just wanted to add a couple things. When Bill McHugh, who is here also, he and I talked about where we should put the project on the land. We intentionally chose to hide it behind the mature forest there so that it is screened off of Meridian Avenue. Also, during the process, we decided to move it further north, so there's about 115 feet from the property line to the resident to the south to give them a little bit of room to. So we moved it north and further east. And then I talked to Charlie Kern, and so did Bill McHugh, the homeowner directly to the west in the woods there. He requested that we use evergreen trees there, and we agreed because certainly wintertime hardwood tree, it's a hardwood forest, so it wouldn't have screening in the wintertime. We are paying to upgrade the three-phase power. It's about a half-mile upgrade. That's a significant cost for us, but that's part of our interconnection charge from XL Energy. We're willing to do it, but that's going to be a benefit to some of those homeowners around there as well. The glare mitigation, we do feel confident that the evergreens that we're planting, the screening will mitigate the potential for the three sites. And as Marty explained in the ordinance, if there is a problem in the future, we have to address it. I want to add that we do own, IPS Solar, we partner with a company, NextEra Energy, out of Maryland. We're the local company that finds the leases, works to get projects permitted, and then NextEra Energy is the company that's the money that supports us and then ultimately finds the owner of the project. They own a operations and maintenance company that will come by, because we have about 150 megawatts in Minnesota already. And so it's efficient for them to come by. Twice a year, they'll mow the pollinator mix, and once a year, they'll apply a weed barrier.
I have a question about maintenance.
You have.
I know that we've done fixed systems before, but the tracking systems, do they require more maintenance, or, you know, I mean, just by the nature of them, because you have your moving parts, I guess?
Yeah, they've got moving parts, so they've got some gears, so probably a couple extra visits a year. But there's still really not much to it.
Okay.
So. The last item I wanted to add, and then I'll let everyone ask questions, the decommissioning plan. So we had estimated it at like $48,000, $46,000. Multiply 125% of that, it's up to $58,564. That's what we will post in a letter of credit or a bond. And typically, we like to try to include salvage costs. I know you don't do that in this county, so it is what it is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a question about the six-foot evergreens?
Yes.
They look great right after you put them in, but I know that mature evergreens like that are really hard to keep alive. Do you have a plan for watering them and making sure that they grow? I mean, if you put them in, and we had last year where there was no rain, I can guarantee you, you wouldn't have them at the end of the year.
No, the company that we have, we have a one-year guarantee with them. There is something in the ordinance that states we need to maintain it, and there's a $5,000 escrow we've got to have there. So it's in our interest to have them because, to, you know, stay alive. Otherwise, we've got to replace them. So that's part of, with our landscape company, they'll be doing that.
Mr. Chairman, it talks about a 35-year longevity. Can that be extended?
No. What we, we have a lease with Bill McHugh for 25 years with two five-year extensions. What would happen after 25 years is we would have to come back and re-permit it. XL would have to agree to that. The landowner, I guess, has agreed to it because we have it in the lease. But then we have, we have to have five subscribers per solar garden. We'd have to have those subscribers to agree to it, too. So it's hard to say what's going to happen in 25 years, but 35 would be the max.
Something I noticed was not using concrete or pads and just putting posts in the ground. Is that to create less disturbance of the soils?
Yeah, we really don't need to disturb the soil that much. You know, we're going to drive them down six to 10 feet once we do soil borings. And we were going to do soil borings last week, but it's just been too rainy. So we plan on doing that this week, so then we'll find out. There's a concrete pad to house some of the electrical equipment. XL's transformer and some of our equipment, but yeah, you can just braid them down and they'll hold.
Okay. Any further questions? Commissioner Pique?
What's the chances of you get the 10 acres? It sounds like that's kind of a standard lot or whatever. Two years down the road, can you add on to that, or what's the potential of that happening?
No, we can't because there's a two-mile radius in the ordinance for Scott County. So we can, we, no one can build within two miles of this site once it's constructed.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions for applicant? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment on this application, come up to the podium and sign in and start with your name. sign in and start with your name.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Dull. I live here in Shakopee. Tonight I'm representing the Minnesota Land and Liberty Coalition. We are a nonprofit organization made of farmers, landowners, taxpayers, rate payers, and Minnesotans who want to see all of the above energy here in Minnesota. So the way that we view these projects, these community solar projects that are always mega watt in the state of Minnesota, is that it is a matter of property rights for the applicant. We believe that it's your land and we believe that you should be able to deal with your land as you see fit, especially if it doesn't, is not injurious to anyone else. You know, and in addition to that, these projects also diversify revenue streams for the property owner through the lease agreement, especially with the state of the economy, which is just absolutely horrible. It's, we find it completely necessary to allow that to happen to diversify income and make sure that livelihoods are protected here in Scott County and in the state of Minnesota. And with that, I would of course encourage you to recommend this, this proposal to the county board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make comment on this application? See no one coming up to the podium. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this application.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, recommend approval of interim use permit for IPS Solar to construct and operate a one megawatt community solar energy system, knowing that this recommendation is subject to satisfactorily addressing all conditions listed in the staff report. That must be satisfied prior to county board consideration, IUP. Also, the township has approved this application.
Yeah, a motion by Commissioner Watson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Your application has been approved. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. And thank you everyone else who came. Is there a planning manager report this evening?
There is. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll quote a Mr. Davis, Brad Davis, our planning manager.
Welcome back. It's good to be back at our county boardroom. We've been away for about 18 months, I think, and.
It's hard as finding it.
It was hard to find it, yeah. Where am I? I got lost.
Okay.
We put down breadcrumbs for you.
So since our last board meeting, the, the county board did approve several of your recommendations. On March 15th, the board did approve the conditional use permit for the sale of boatlifts, docks and other marine equipment that was known as Diddy docks down in St. Lawrence Township 169. They also approved the rezone of 11 acres from RR1 to RR2 and the Plimmering Final Plaid of Bowler's Walnut Metal. That created four new lots in New Market Township. Last week, the board approved four items based on your recommendation. They approved the final plaid of Scenic Bay Estates. That creates 19 lots on McMahon Lake, near McMahon Lake in Spring Lake Township. They approved the conditional use permit for Commercial Restoration Nursery. That was just near the Jordan Supper Club down in St. Lawrence Township. They approved the interim use permit for a Home Extended Business. That was Advanced Wall Structures. That was in Spring Lake Township. And the Plimmering Final Plaid of the Field Staying Industrial Park Second Edition that combined or separated two lots in the one, or combined two lots in the one. That's it. I want to share with you, I'm going to put it on your chair, but I'll just hand it out here. I had mentioned at our last meeting that staff did go out and meet with all 10 town boards over the last month. Talked about a variety of permitting, coordination issues. And we sent the notes out to the, to the town clerks and town chairs this morning and I printed out some copies and I'm passing them out to you just so you know some of the discussion. And we met with Jackson Louisville and Sand Creek on February 28th, St. Lawrence, Blakely, Bell Plain and Holene on March 7th, and at Cedar Lake, New Market and Spring Lake on March 21st. I'm not going to go through all of these bullets, just hit the highlights. So one thing we talked about is the development review team meetings, the dirt meetings. You can see each township kind of weighed in on some of their thoughts on whether they should be in person or remote or hybrid, who should be notified in their townships. Some townships want to set a separate fee. And so we have that all documented in the notes. The major follow up there in red text as we are, have moved to a hybrid format starting at our March 30th meeting where we have invited applicants and supervisors and staff to be in person. And we've reserved a room for that, but if they're not able to attend, we can then patch them in from a computer. The next item deals with township recommendations. That is an item I know the planning commission has been very interested in. And so we talked a lot about that. A lot of our townships would like to have the same staff report that you get in your packet, we also provide to the town boards. So they get the same information and can use that information to base their recommendation. So that's the best practice. It doesn't always work well with the different meeting schedules. We have heard here tonight that one of our townships is meeting two nights from now.
Right.
So there's, there can be glitches month to month on how that works and we recognize that. That led to an interesting discussion whether we want to move this meeting to the third Monday of the month versus the second Monday of the month. That obviously would take a lot of planning and coordination and, and it wouldn't happen overnight, but it's something that staff was going to take a look at and see if, based on a calendar, if that makes any sense or there could be ripple effects even that that we got to think about.
Do you know if there's any reason why we do meet the second? Do you know? I mean, since I've been here, it's always been that, right?
But there was a couple of townships that did meet after us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm looking out in the audience. Do you know Marty, was there a historical reason why it was the second Monday?
Do you remember?
Yeah, and, and, well, historically this board has always met the second Monday of the month. And I think it was trying to avoid township meetings, county board meetings and other meetings that, that were already taking place within the county. So I've been here for 37 years and we've always met the second Monday of every month. But I, but I do know also in 2001-ish, we, we made, made an effort to work with all the townships to try and get our planning reports out earlier as, as Brad indicated. We, we try and get our planning reports done a week in advance of, of this meeting. And then we talked to all the township about structuring their meetings in that first week of the month in order, so they could have the benefit of the planning report for those projects where they felt they needed, you know, more process related, more ordinance related information in order to make their recommendation. So, you know, it, it's just historically been second Monday of the month, but we did work with the townships to try and schedule their, their process to work with that.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I wonder if Marty, is it possible that just a long time ago, we wanted to be early in the months before all of the other activities so that they could have the benefit of what happened? And now that doesn't make so much difference because of technology?
It, it certainly could, Commissioner Robbins. It certainly could. I mean, if you go back, we were, we were dealing with half section maps back in, back in the 80s and 70s and, yeah, we didn't, we didn't have the benefit of, of the information and, and the ability to pull up aerial photos that we do today.
Right.
Doesn't Spring Lake meet the second Thursday of the month?
Yeah, so a couple of townships choose not to meet the first, in the first week of the month. Spring Lake is one. And I believe there's one other township that meets the second.
So sometimes we are ahead of them. Not always, but sometimes.
Correct, correct.
And I do appreciate the list that you gave us with all the townships. Thanks.
And so we, we're going to continue to encourage townships to withhold recommendation until they get a staff report, although we did hear that doesn't always work. And some townships still invite applicants to come to their meeting because they want to hear about the project. And they may feel like they have enough information to make a recommendation even without the staff report. We understand that. We did hear a pretty, a firm from Cedar Lake Township, they would prefer not to make recommendations. They don't believe the land use and zoning is in their purview. That's a county decision. And they stated that the only time that they are going to make a recommendation on a land use or zoning permit is if the parcel's along the township road.
Right.
And if there's any impacts to the township roads, then they feel like they may make a recommendation. And we'll work with them on that. As you know, in our staff reports, we typically put the township recommendation. The last several months, we've, we've usually looked at Cedar Lake has chosen not to make a recommendation. We'll continue to do that. And we'll continue to screen applicants and not send them to the town board for a recommendation and confuse them because they're not going to get one. So we're going to do a better job at the staff level to screen applicants and send only the ones that are on a township road to their town meeting for a recommendation. We hope it works out. We'll see how that goes. The second page, we spent a lot of time talking about how we get input. A lot of, a lot of townships, word of mouth spreads and they hear about a project and they have a full, packed town hall meeting about a project before it even comes to our meeting. So that's one way of getting input. Some townships don't feel like they, they get a lot of people at their meetings and they would prefer to come to this meeting and that public hearing. They feel like that's the best way for them to get all of the information and input. And then, then they feel more comfortable making a recommendation. So we're trying to work through the timing of that a little bit as well. All of our townships prefer that they get an email notice each month. In the past, we only notified townships if there was a project in their township. But the townships said they would like to know regardless if there's a project or not. So we changed practice for this meeting to now email all 10 clerks. And I don't know, is it just the clerks bar or who else gets notified?
Probably did some supervisors too.
Supervisors and clerks so that they're aware of the meeting like this one.
Whether they have something on the.
Yep.
Agenda or not.
Yep. The rest of it, I won't get into. It had more to do with code enforcement, building permits and not necessarily stuff that we, as to the book that we do here, Commissioner. I just wanted to share those notes with you. And coming up in May, I don't know if, yeah, if the, what the agenda looks like from May, we may plan to do a workshop. We're still trying to figure that out if it makes sense if we have a shorter agenda. That's it. That's all I have for an update.
Well, it certainly seems like the townships, a lot more township supervisors are showing up at these meetings and, and it's certainly helpful when staff says they're in the room and they want to make comment on it. And so I think the outreach by staff to townships has been really beneficial. And I think it just seems like we get better, better coordination between the townships and the, and the planning commission when we do that. So thank you very much for your efforts on that and the work on that, work by staff. Anything else before I call for adjournment? Anything else for the, okay. Oh, yes, sir.
We had a letter saying that you were going to discuss the Burgess Estates tonight. That's why I'm here. Over those three things on the top of your thing, you guys zipped through them just like.
Yeah, that was on the consent agenda. Yes.
You didn't ask the local people that are going to do it?
Yes.
Did you?
Yeah, at the very beginning of the meeting.
It, it was more of a between you guys and you all, yeah, we're okay with it. We're ready to go.
No, I asked if anyone wanted to have that.
I was waiting for somebody to come up and look at that plan like you did all the other plans.
Right. That was on the consent agenda and I asked if anyone wanted to remove from the consent agenda, sir.
I was, I really understand that was from you people.
No, no, I said anyone here.
Because my house sits right in the middle of what they're planning. And on Burgess Avenue, they basically sold off all those lots and landlocked that farm. I talked to the planning committee a couple of times and they said, there is no way you're going to put a road down up at 205th Street. They're all dirt in beside my house right now for a driveway.
So.
I can show you the plan.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't you discuss it with staff? And, and we have two staff people here right now who you can speak directly with about what's going on there.
Because I was expecting you to do something like you did with everybody else.
Right, right. And, and, and when they're on consent, we ask if anyone wants it removed because it's one of those issues that unless somebody says, yes, I'd like it removed, then we don't, we just approve it as it comes up.
And I think, wouldn't removing it mean to take off the agenda?
No, 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 no. Off the consent agenda to be considered.
That's what we're understanding.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sorry, that's a misunderstanding then.
To all those other ones in great detail.
Right, right. And we, and we would gladly take anything off the consent agenda that anyone would say. And I said, would anyone like to have that removed from the consent agenda?
Because they've got, Coobee's has got the whole, that old 71 acres, plotted out with the driveway going right next to my house there. And I got an issue with that.
Okay.
And they said, the planning, I've talked to planning before and they said, there is no way, and we've told them, there's no way there's going to be a road in there. And that, it's a wet spot.
Okay.
And I've lived there 40 years.
Sure.
This is the first year and because of drought last year.
Right, that it's been dry.
There was not water standing in there until August May.
Right.
Oh, if I may, by being on the consent agenda, it means everything has been approved by the planning staff and that's why it's on the consent agenda. But like you, if you have an issue, that's what we would like. And I'm really sorry that.
Yeah, this is, this is.
I didn't explain that better because of the way you were talking and.
I'm sorry that you missed it, so that's on me that that happened, so.
Between you people.
Right, no, 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 it's, and, and people often will say something from the, from the, from the audience and say, no, I'd, I'd like to hear more on that.
Well, that's the first time I've ever been here and I was waiting for you to do what you did with everything else.
Right.
That's why we're still here.
Okay, well, I advise you to get together with staff. They're both nodding their heads at me that you should come and talk to them about this.
Because there's a major issue there.
Okay, okay, well, we'll see what we can do. I appreciate you bringing that up here, but I, I wish you would have asked this because we could have discussed this.
Yeah, I wish you would have made it, we could have explained it.
Okay.
Because you were discussing between yourself and you were like, is anybody here going to, and when you said that, you weren't saying, this is a public issue. Is anybody in the public? You were saying, I'm talking about yourself.
I did say, anyone here have anything?
And it is recorded.
So, but, but no, I, I appreciate your input about that. But staff will definitely meet with you on this and, and see what they can do to help you.
And you've sold most of the lots without even having approved rates.
Right. Well, they can help you with whatever issues you have there. So thank you very much for bringing that up. Are there any other issues before, okay? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion by Commissioner Hentz, second by Commissioner Watson. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.